Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council. This is a regular, a night for regular session. It is Monday, October 1st, 2012. We're pretty close to 7:30. Our first issue is to make sure that we have a forum and we have all members present. We have all members present, so we do have a forum. Disposition of minutes. The regular session held September 17th, 2012. I have a motion to accept those minutes. So moved?
Second.
All those in favor of accepting the minutes from regular session September 17th, 2012, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are accepted. Just one more reminder, the city does offer free Wi-Fi, especially for city council meetings and other, other very interesting things in the city. But you need to get a password. You need to sign up and get a password. And you can do that in the government channel before, after meetings, or most times during the week, during the week also. So please check with somebody in the government channel. You do need to sign up to get that. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor, if you would like.
Just a few things. I think you're going to be talking about the task force put together for the sewer system, county sewer system?
I thought I'd do it at the end of this.
Okay, no problem. The other one, of course, is that the J-PAC Safety Tour is going to be 7 o'clock this Thursday, October 4th. I know Ron Lucas, who will be the bus driver, wants to get everybody RSVPing. Actually, what you're seeing is that the bus holds 16, and if there's more people, you're going to be off the bus, I guess. So the idea is to get rolling on it. Well, you know, you can't drive around with an unsafe bus. We saw enough of that this, this weekend on the pickup trucks at Tenfest. That, so just contact Ron Lucas in my office. And again, I think he wants to know if anybody's going to be on the tour or not. I think if you add the entire J-PAC, it covers most of people, but then after that, members of the public have expressed an interest. And we realize we don't have two buses to run around, unfortunately. We just have one. The other one, of course, is that there was a news release put out that the, there will be some excavation and road work or water work on East State Street, just so you guys are aware of it. We're doing Lorraine and some of the Harris and some of that piping there, so it will be tied up during this, next week. And that's all that really matters.
So along those lines, there's a detour, correct, that will take place?
What?
There'll be a detour, correct?
Uh, yes, I believe there is. I don't know what it is offhand, but it will be around. They'll, they'll show you how to go.
Auditor Hecht, do you have anything to add?
No.
Law Director Lang? No, of course not. Okay. We have one ordinance for third reading. We'll move on to that. Ordinance 9412. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and execute an agreement with the Ohio Public Works Commission for a Clean Ohio Conservation Grant. Introduced by Councilmember Gosner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move adoption of ordinance 9412. Second. This ordinance will allow the city to enter into a grant application for state of Ohio funds that will allow us to purchase land to be used for conservation and recreation purposes only. This is something that the city and other organizations within this community have been successful at getting in the past to help us obtain and protect land for the same purpose. There is a, there is a match if we were to complete the application and receive this grant where the city has to come up with 25% matching funds, or it includes city labor, I believe, or in-kind contributions from city, city employees and departments. We don't have the exact land decided on at this point, as far as I'm aware, but we would like to be able to give permission to the mayor's office to go out and seek these funds shortly.
Questions or comments?
I would point out, it's a competitive grant, and there's always the possibility of not getting it.
And the grant is, is due like November 1st, so that's why it's important to leave our window open. And we're not sure that there's going to be other grant opportunities after this. They were having a hard time. The legislature didn't fulfill it until a lot of lobbying happened for this round, so...
All these, all members who are in favor of adopting ordinance 9412, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign. The ordinances that... Ordinances for second reading usually are just read, not, no action is taken on them. However, the introducing council member may want some action. First, ordinance 9912. An ordinance approving the report of the Assessment Equalization Board with respect to objections concerning the estimated assessments for sidewalk improvements associated with the North Court Street Infrastructure, Infrastructure Improvements Project and the Grosvenor Slip Project. Introduced by Councilmember Nysley. Ordinance 10312. An ordinance authorizing surveying and preliminary design of the Columbus Road Lancaster Street Infrastructure Improvements Project, number 269. Introduced by Councilmember Gosner. Ordinance 10412. An ordinance authorizing the acquisition of property at 83 Columbus Road and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Fall. So we'll move on to ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 10612. An ordinance authorizing the Service Safety Director to execute a mutual aid agreement between the City of Athens and Ohio University for law enforcement assistance and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance is something that we've been working with the university over a number of years. It addresses such issues as contiguous borders and primary jurisdiction, investigations, mutual assistance, command and control. Again, this is an example of the city and university working collaboratively together for the primary reason of safety. Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing the purchase of chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, and sulfur dioxide. Introduced by Councilmember Butler.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is for 2013, and essentially, we're looking at $293,000 worth of expenditure on, on the above-mentioned items. Thank you.
Could you tell us why we're going to use them?
Um, well, my understanding is that this is for our water, the chlorine, fluoride, salt, caustic soda, sulfur dioxide. These are annual purchases that we do. Correct, Mayor?
Yes, you are correct. If you look at the, where the funds are coming from, the sewer fund, waterfront, also the streets, so some of it is street salt as well. Having a discussion of staff today, Andy Stone, the director of Public Works, said the, the price of salts down more than it's been like two decades. I guess the mild winter did it, but I guess there's a glut of salt out there. So he's anticipating to stockpile some of it at the end of the year, end of the winter, if possible. Because we did, remember, we spent about $100,000, $150,000 on our salt bin at the time. So we've had more capacity, and it's all covered and well-drained. So just so you know that we're looking at the prices.
In the discussion last week, I think it was said that all of these chemicals were for the water department, but we did discover that the salt was in, in the ordinance for the street department also. Several, several departments are working together to get the best price. Ordinance 10812. An ordinance establishing a domestic partner benefits policy for city employees. Introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This follows our discussion in our Finance and Personnel Committee meeting last week, and which we reviewed the number of employees that are here at the City of Athens, 161 total, of which 39 single employees potentially, and nine employees with children could potentially enroll for this benefit plan. And we have established the definitions and also a set of criteria that the two persons must meet to meet, for that domestic partner eligibility requirement, and that is attached to the ordinance. And we'll be moving forward, forward with this. We can, we can announce this to the employees for the open enrollment period, which begins December, and then the eligibility for this will be beginning on January 1, 2013.
Yeah, it's, it's really great to see this finally come forward. It's part of a greater group of changes that we've been implementing over the past couple of years to try to update our city code and make sure that we're as, as open and inclusive a community as we can be, including the Domestic Partner Registry, which Athens is one of several cities now that have that in the state of Ohio. We updated our discrimination laws in the city, as well as our, some local hate crime legislation to, to include more groups in our definition of those that could be the target of such crimes. And so this is bringing us to the forefront of, I think, where we need to be in order to make sure that we are caring for all our employees and their loved ones in as equal a fashion as possible.
Mayor?
I'd also like to point out that Ohio Gosner did a lot of the pushing of this on the council side, as well as other members. Also, the Student Senate, High University Students, Baha Senate did a lot of work. Nikki Hart was an advocate for this. You remember, he came in front of the council at least two or three times. And again, what held us up is just looking at the numbers and say, and making sure we could afford any changes. We also worked with the Human Resources Department at the university to see how their, manage their, you know, how their domestic partner benefits work as well. So we had some leadership there, rather some insight there.
And our, our, the city's human resources person, Claudia Reagan, was also very instrumental in getting this all put together. My next question. Ordinance 10912. An ordinance amending the 2012 appropriation ordinance. Introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance has several parts to it, and what we're doing is appropriating money to pay down some notes, and then also appropriating money for some additional supplies, expenses that will be, be needed by various city departments between now and the end of the year. So I'll read through the amounts and give a very brief explanation of where that money is coming from.
Member Nysley, could I ask for suspension on this, once tonight?
Sure. Mr. President, I ask that we consider this ordinance under suspension.
Second.
And the reason for this being is, is that there are some bills, I would believe, that probably do need to be paid, and some supplies that probably need to be ordered immediately. And some notes paid off.
The notes paid off, and the grant funds, reimbursement there for, at the community center, or the art grant to cover. So this needs to be taken care of.
Okay.
Councilmembers in favor of suspending the rules, an ordinance 10912, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Rules have been suspended.
Mr. President, I move adoption of ordinance 10912.
Second.
And this particular ordinance calls for appropriation of monies in several different departments. $401,000 would be for the general fund, and this is for the purchase of the fire truck. Part of the portion of the money is to be used to roll over the note, the money we borrowed to purchase the fire truck, and then $50,000 of that will be to pay down the portion of the debt, so paying down on the principal. We have $24,000 that's needed for the street fund to cover Sunnyside repair. Some of you may have noticed that there was a water main break and the extensive excavation at the end of Sunnyside by the East State Street intersection, so we need to get that repaired as quickly as possible. $3,000 for the recreation fund, $1,000 for gas and oil, $2,000 for vehicle maintenance, and these are for items for the recreation and community center. $15,000 will be needed for supplies through year-end, and we briefly discussed that last week. The, the budget for the community center had been lowered at the end of the year due to, in part, to a lower budget that we were working with, loss of local revenue, or local funds, local state funds. And so it was a much tighter budget, so now we're needing to appropriate that, more money for the supplies. Likewise, $15,000 to the community center, and then $3,000 for the go-bus. And this is a pass-through, and this is for tickets that are, that we work with HAPCAP, the Community Action Center, and a pass-through of the ticket expenses. And then $12,000 for electric through year-end for the community center. The $55,000 for the ARC grant to cover grant payments. As Auditor Hecht mentioned, this is a pass-through that we, has been paid by Ohio Department of Transportation for one of our projects, and now it needs to be passed through our books now to appropriately indicate that expense for that project. We'll have $1,353,000 to the sewer debt fund, and that is for several different expenses within that. One of them is $503,000 for the energy efficiency improvements that were made to the wastewater treatment plant, and then the other $850,000 is to be allocated as a note for the design of our sewer...
Wastewater treatment.
Wastewater treatment plant. The new design of a much larger project that will be happening over the next few years. The last is $200,000, and we, that will be needed to the Internal Service Medical Fund, and this is to cover medical claims through the year-end. And we had talked about this briefly before, that expenses have been running higher due to some of the claims. City of Athens is self-insured, so we, we do pay these, the medical claims and expenses, and they have been higher than anticipated. So we need the additional money to cover those expenses.
Auditor.
Um, I was just going to add a few things. I didn't feel well enough to attend the committee meeting last Monday, but I did watch at home. And so I was going to address the, the budget at the community center, the recreation and community center budget. Member Fall had asked several questions, valid questions. These are things that you don't always look at or have time to look at, that we look at all the time. But I, I just wanted to say that I think that Rich Campitalli does an excellent job managing his budget. And so I spent some time going back through last year's budget and appropriations, and this year's, and actually, we made several additional appropriations in those budgets towards the end of the year. I think what we try to do is, is give departments a tighter budget to begin with, so that they, you know, have to think twice when they want to spend more money and come back and go through council and ask for it. However, in reality, last year in 270, which is recreation, they spent about $200,000 in the budget. So far this year is only $170,000. It's probably not reasonable that our budgets are ever going to be lower from one year to the next. If we can keep them the same, we consider that good. In 271, which is the community center, they spent, this is not their budget, but what they spent, $301,000. This year, we have budgeted $330,000. However, we, $35,000 of that is for the go-bus, which was appropriated in April, and that's a new program that we're doing, and so that wouldn't have been in the budget last year. There are also other things that have happened last year and this year that are one-time events that we don't take into account, like energy improvements and bike path, paving of the parking lot down there. Those are things that we did last year that we won't be doing this year. This year, there were some repairs towards West, lighting upgrades, and, and the go-bus transportation appropriation. So I just think a closer look was warranted after your questions, but I feel like they're pretty much right on target, if that reassures anyone.
Thank you, Kathy.
And all of that, yeah. Because it is a valid question, if they started out with the same amount and were coming back. But they didn't really, and, you know, I think the mayor will agree, they're pretty on track, and they do a pretty good job managing their money. The other thing I was going to add is about the medical, you know, Member Nysley did an excellent job explaining everything, but the medical internal service fund, that yes, the expenses have gone up, and we did discuss the fact that we might have to increase the employee contributions to that fund from the departments, which will affect their budget for next year.
And that will be part of the calculation in our next budget, budgeting session for next year.
So the $200,000 is, is available unappropriated, but then that doesn't leave us any cushion or carryover for next year, so...
My question was specifically about the increase in medical, and if that is a generalized increase across the board for our employees, or in terms of their use, or if it was one or two specific cases that were rather expensive.
We actually just recently had a couple really big weeks. We pay these, we release checks weekly, and we had a couple really big ones. We probably will be getting some money back from our stop-loss fund, however, we increased that amount to save the city money, so that's more money that we have to pay out. We went from $65,000 to $75,000, so someone, you know, we still, so then now we have to spend $75,000 on an employee before we get any money back, or before that kicks in. And I think that has happened a couple times this year, and...
The bills will fluctuate, because what you're seeing is bills for people who get sick or not. So it was a bump last month, I believe. And again, we're just wanting to make sure there's cushion. Next year, of course, when we're talking about budget and the committees and everything, this will be, we usually do a calculation of how much we put aside per employee. We'll probably raise that up a little bit. And again, that's all going to come out of the different departments by employee.
Correct.
And we're going to have to put some aside just in that calculation. It's not like we're actually pulling it from the employees, but pulling it from the departments. I would also want to mention that the, the $401,000 rollover for the general, for the fire truck, $50,000, that's being paid down, and again, that's part of the mix that the university's given us, $50,000. So we're paying it down in those increments to make it helpful.
I might also just add that, yeah, and one of these notes in the sewer debt fund towards about the $50,000...
Probably paid off.
We're going to pay that off early. It, it says there it's not due till December 13th, but we got our grant money, and I think we've talked about this, at least in our committee, but we got the grant money, and we have the city matches available, and so we're going to pay it off to save a little bit of money on interest. So that's one reason. We'll probably do that this week, once this ordinance passes.
So by suspending rules, you save some money? That's what you're saying?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
Anybody else? This, this is a long discussion about ordinance 10912. Member Nysley has asked that we consider this under suspension of the rules that has been approved, so now we're voting on the ordinance. All those in favor of ordinance 10912, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance has been passed. Ordinance 11012. An ordinance determining to proceed with sidewalk improvements associated with the Grosvenor Slip Project and the North Court Street Area Infrastructure Improvements Project as described in Resolutions R-0312 and R-0412, respectively. Introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, we had another ordinance, and this is a series of several that we, it's part of the process for making assessments for sidewalk repairs. We've discussed this in committee meetings several times, but I'll just give a very brief explanation once again. It's a several-step process. Property owners are responsible for maintaining their sidewalks, and we had several projects, one on North Court Street, another one on Grosvenor Slip. It made sense while we were making repairs to water and sewer lines, and also curbs and storm sewers, to repair the sidewalks that were in the worst repair at, at that time. Citizens are responsible for the repair. They also have the right to protest if they don't think that the assessment is fair, or in some way maybe that even the sidewalk repair shouldn't be done. And so earlier this summer, we had a three-member volunteer citizen board who met for an hour and a half with city administration and our clerk of council, and looked at each of the cases and made decisions on that. So now, so that earlier ordinance that we were reading, 9912, was approving that report, but the second one, the 11012 that we're looking at right now, allows us to proceed with the actual improvements. So this is what puts the ordinance, what puts the paperwork in process for us to be able to complete the project and, and finish the assessments for the, for the sidewalk repairs.
Um, ordinance 11112. An ordinance authorizing the auditor to reduce 2012 year-end appropriations. Introduced by the Finance and Personnel Committee.
I will offer an explanation. We discussed this briefly. This is part of a process that we go through each year towards the end of the year, where the city looks at all the resources they have, from grants and different revenues. And if those certified resources, they need to be accurate as the year-end approaches. And so in certain cases, if we've received, say, a major grant and haven't spent all of it, and we're carrying part of that over into the next fiscal year, what we do is say we lower the appropriations, or, so that we can then report to the auditor and the county treasurer that our certified resources are lower. So that's what we're doing at this year-end. It's a required of each city by Ohio Revised Code, so it's something we need to make sure we go through to give, really, an accurate presentation to city administration and legislators, but also the citizens about what our financial resources are.
Just going to add that this is something the auditors asked us to do several years ago. In the first couple of years we did this, we tried to do it, you know, fund by fund, looking at all the account lines, and we would come in with, you know, a two or three-page ordinance for council to look at. And it, it's really hard to know that by the time council stops meeting in December. And we just used to always seem like we always missed something. And so this gives our office the authority to go ahead and look in and at it and do them all as needed right up through the end of the year.
Moving on to announcements and other business. I have a couple announcements. The mayor alluded to a possible sewer project, a joint project between Athens County and the City of Athens. And we talked about that for the last two meetings, and so we decided that we would turn it over to an ad hoc committee and try as we might, our clerk could not find a process to form, formulate this ad hoc committee, so I'm just appointing one. The people I would, I'd like to ask to serve on this commission would be Chris Nysley, Chris Fall, as, as members from Athens City Council, the mayor, the Service Safety Director, the city engineer, the city planner representing the city, and only two commissioners. The commissioners can't bring all three, so probably Commissioner Eliason and Commissioner Payne will be here representing the commissioners, and their consultant. I imagine their, their consultant, Jennifer Fromer, who made the presentation to council a few weeks ago, will probably be involved in this also. I'm going to ask that the mayor convene the first mem, the first meeting of this ad hoc committee, and then I hope that the committee would meet maybe a couple times a month, and come back and, and communicate to Athens City Council at least once a month about what's happening. So, that, yes?
I would point out that it's possible that... I would point out that it's possible that on the county side, they may want to put their county planner into the mix. At staff meeting, one of the conversations that occurred also is, we might want to look at some legal expertise, whether from the law director, or their side, or even there's, there are law firms out there that do this all the time, I imagine. I'm not sure if we want to spend the money to do that. I think it's up to the county to do that. But, well, again, part of the thing is that these type of agreements are out there, and I'm sure there's somebody who draws them up for a good, you know, $300, $400 an hour. So, but eventually, we'll have to have some, you know, legal expertise in the mix and see what we can and can't do, and what the possibilities are. But again, in the initial conceptual conversation, this ad hoc committee is something we want to put together.
Just in the beginning, I think the commissioners are asking us, just answer the question, are we interested in entering this partnership? And if the answer is yes, then we'll proceed to flesh it out. And I would see that at that time, that's when we'd be looking for some legal expertise, and maybe even opening the committee to some residents of the city, because I've already heard from some residents about concern with opening the new, to our new sewer to more development, so.
And that would be my recommendation on that as well, just to, as an initial matter, just kind of see how feasible this is, and then depending on which, whatever issues may arise throughout that process, I mean, at heart, we're just talking about a contract, is what we're talking about, which of course, my office does all the time, but if there are specific issues that come up to where it would be appropriate to bring on other help, then we could look at it at that point, that would be my recommendation.
Yeah, I think what we're looking at, really, I think, is this is where the pros and cons of having the agreement, and then the checks and balances that would be implied by having an agreement, what we feel would be necessary, what they would feel would be necessary. And then somewhere along the line, we get to start to gel together, but really, first pros and cons, yes or no, and then after that, you know, what makes us feel comfortable with it.
Have with the full councils, so we're hoping that this proceeds a little more expeditiously.
Okay.
So.
I'll get my office together to contact everybody.
Okay, thank you. The law director raised his voice, so we went to say that we would like to appoint him as a voting member of the National League of Cities, which meets in, what'd we say? December? December? Okay, and you've done this for several years.
I was. And the law director prior to me, for years before that.
So I'm going, I would make a motion that city council appoint the law director to our voting member. You don't think I can do that?
May I?
A council member can do that? Well, there's a council member over there, at the very end.
Absolutely. I make a motion that we appoint the law director.
And there's a second. Seriously, is there any other discussion? Do we all understand what we're talking about?
Where's the meeting this year?
I'm actually not sure where.
Okay, just wondering.
Do you remember where it's at?
Somewhere close. I don't know, we'll figure it. You'll probably need some kind of transportation. All those in favor of this appointment for our law director, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Congratulations, Mr. Law Director. We think. And also, the mayor has an appointment to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Thomas Robb. We have a several-page resume here, if anybody's interested in looking at that.
He's a grad student, but he's been an undergraduate here. He's been working with the Voinic Center. He did last, he actually coordinated, I'd say, a good percentage of the beautification day last year. He's pretty energetic. I hope he can sit still long enough, but he'll be the alternate at this point. He seems to be engaged, so, and I, my communication with him is that he's capable.
Will he be a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals or an alternate?
He'll be an alternate member, yeah.
Which often is called upon to vote yes.
If they do not have a full board, they get called upon. We have two alternates, five members.
Do we need to ask somebody to approve that appointment?
I'll approve the appointment. I'll second you, alternate.
We have a motion, a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor of approving Thomas Robb as the newest member to our Board of Zoning Appeals, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Hey, welcome, Mr. Robb. I think that's all I have to.
Quick, I guess. And this is about Halloween, which we talked about at our last regular session. The university and the city both have put together safety teams, and the city is in the process of putting together their Halloween safety team, so if there are members of the public, residents, citizens that would like to participate, please contact Elder Levron Lucas at the city mayor's office. And so these are, they're mostly informational, and so they sort of patrol through the evening and provide help to students if they need, if they need anything, they provide guidance. They can also be a safety fallback. If there's no other emergency personnel nearby, then they can, they can help with that role and pitch in. I've done it a couple of years, and Member Nysley's done it a couple of years, and it's a good way to see the festivities and from sort of a different perspective.
Ninety percent of the time, you're really giving directions on somebody who's out of town, has lost.
That's a lot of it, yeah.
Doesn't know how to get to Court Street, or doesn't know how to get away from Court Street.
And reminding people not to park in lawns and things like that.
You actually provide a little bit of a buffer there. If we see somebody, you know, on a sidewalk drinking, we usually tell them to get back on the lawn, and not everybody will do that.
So if you are interested, please contact the mayor's office.
If I may, I wanted to kind of follow up on the service, or the city safety tour. As the mayor pointed out, there is limited seating. However, we have had quite a few individuals who have emailed in their request for certain streets or intersections that they wanted the bus to drive down, so I want to kind of reiterate that, that that's something that citizens can do, and that they can email the deputy service safety director, Ron Lucas, and just give him the address or the street. We've already got together a pretty good tour at this point in time, and for the first time doing this, I'm pretty happy to see the way things have kind of come together so far, and maybe next year, we can get a larger bus, depending on.
Get one of the go-buses or something?
Sure.
I don't know if you can make it to all the parts.
Yeah, I think it would be kind of hard, and a couple other streets might be a little tight.
Fair view.
I do want to point that out, that we encourage individuals to submit streets that they would like for us to take a look at.
Do we have any citizens who would like to speak to city council on issues that were not covered tonight?
Are we planning any committees next week?
Oh, I think I skipped that, yes.
That's okay.
Next week is the meeting night, so.
I would like a committee meeting, please.
I'm sorry? Sure, fine.
Might be a safety services committee.
Good. And that could grow.
It could grow.
Again, citizens who wish to speak? No? Then we are adjourned at 8:00.